I forgot the question for Rachel, so I was like.
Oh, you got it.
You're on line.
It was a trump danger. Okay, I'll figure this one out.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Ready. Okay, we're gonna open this select board meeting at six o'clock. Make second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice.
Very good, Rachel.
Thank you. I've been practicing.
Okay. Make a motion for a sign more, second.
Second. A motion in favor? I figured while you were.
Okay.
Leave this.
We don't need the more. Here, give us five.
Don't move your mouth. What?
I sent it on purpose.
Spring fever has hit us heavily.
We, oh my goodness. Eighty-eight degrees in Spandau today.
Love you.
Eighty-eight.
I've heard the last bus have struck. I was driving too fast.
No way.
Debbie, that's our cloud of them.
Oh, wow.
I thought that was just a dust storm. We wonder what's happening.
Oh, no, Rachel going by.
That's right. Need, um, motion to approve the minutes from April 10th as written.
I, I moved that we approved the minutes of April 10th as written.
Second. All in favor? So we need also approval for the minutes of April 18th as written. Motion?
Answer.
No, this was a special select board meeting that Tony, Dan, and Joanne.
I think more.
Then I will say.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Old business, community cleanup day will be May 18th, and there'll be an open house starting at two with the town, uh, town garage.
Garage.
With hot dogs.
And two on Friday.
Friday, that's May 18th. Interject a little bit here. Uh, because it's connected to the, uh, student body. And yesterday, and with, um, Land and Towns, and they are going, the school-based children are going to do it, and in the morning, and it will culminate with a luncheon at the school. At the owner's.
School kids are gonna be at the school.
Yeah.
But the adults who are cleaning up are gonna go to the town.
At two o'clock. I thought two o'clock for the kids was a little weird. Yes. Okay.
It's better that they stay in a group for their schools.
Yeah, we don't wanna mix those adults and children too much.
The trash bags came in and the gloves.
Muffs. And we, we need to talk about this later, not now.
Well, it's on the agenda for now, so.
Okay.
So if you go to school and you're a student there, they're going to have the same dismissal time, are they? And they're using this as a school, can you explain?
They will, they will start approximately at nine o'clock. Um, we divided up the town, North Lebeck Road, South Lebeck Road, um, including various other.
For the students?
Uh, and with groups of students, with adults. And they will have, uh, they will be equipped with latex gloves, bags, plastic bags. And the adults will be fitted with, um, reflector vests, which we are getting from Merit Home.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, yeah, but I, I think I emailed you about the vest that Merit Home has are really too large for students. So we might be able to have something else for them, but they're, uh, we did talk about having the road crew or someone put out columns and, um, signs.
Or caution, work area, work area, something like that.
Um, and that should be done about eleven-thirty or ten, eleven, let's say.
And then they have a regular lunch.
Then they'll go down to the, the, uh, school and, uh, Tina and I thought it would be nice to have an outside barbecue or whatever there. And I have said that, I spoke on the, at the select board.
You're making cookies.
I, uh, yeah, please. I'm gonna go to Costco and buy big vats of brownie mix, you know, and, and lots of like buckets of ice cream. And they can create their own something. Don't you think that's a nice reward? And I think we could fit it in.
And so you're making breads.
It's a mix, come on.
Oh, that's not, if it's not from scratch, you don't, you're not making it.
Not very good.
So the town will purchase the ice cream and the bread?
Yeah, but I'll go to Costco because they really do a great job with bulk stuff.
Which we still have to get the stuff for.
Hot dogs.
Yeah. That would be good.
I got permission from Bob, the chief hood, to use the fire department grill, um, at the garage.
So I'm gonna roll chips. So I think that'll be a lovely place once it does apply.
Hot dog, roll chips.
As it's been wanted.
That's, that's good.
Can I also say that this is probably going to be beach cleanup time as well? Because the dumpster is gonna be here, Jason knows so. They usually donate that, so this will be the one and only time that this community slash.
The whole weekend.
It's the whole weekend.
It's the whole weekend, it's not just the eighteen foot kids and the, you know, people around town.
And then the open house with the public, public garage and all that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think Barbara and Everett will probably be out and about with the window boxes and stuff like that on that day as well. So come the last week of May, you will hardly grab the boxes. It will be sparkling. Sparkles.
I've heard lately there's a lot of trash going down the Dixie Road. I don't know if anybody's observed that, but it is.
I believe illegal to litter.
Well, and it's also, what is that road question you're asking?
Just plain ugly.
Maybe.
That is.
That's pretty bad, north of that, that's pretty bad lately.
Seems to be an awful lot of trash.
Lot of trash, it's everywhere, every square foot.
Yeah. What is it, they go to McFadden's, get a pizza, a beer. Boom.
After window.
After window.
McDonald's.
June 23rd.
I think we have a sign that says, "If you don't wanna clean up, bring your mother."
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, just a notice that we had to postpone the public hearing for the old cannery, um, that's being now demolished, the back end of the act, so for the 23rd, just in case it doesn't get completed, so.
I think you actually had to vote to do that.
So that's why we're doing that, we need a motion to.
I move that we postpone that meeting till May the 23rd.
At five.
Five o'clock.
All, all in favor? I believe we're going to also try to have a discussion on broadband that day, on the 23rd as well.
Twenty-first.
No, the public, public hearing.
The twenty-first, oh, the public hearing will be the 23rd, yes.
Okay, so.
Twenty-first.
Because there may not be much to discuss, um, the old building, so we will have, um.
We can fill that in with a huge discussion on broadband and fiber optics. It's not just broadband, it's fiber.
So there's an hour between five and six before the select board meeting?
No, there's no select board meeting on that day.
So we just talk as long as we want.
Hey.
Yay, are you gonna be running that? Because we don't have the permission on it.
I will talk about it, yes. And the rule will be there, and, um, I'm hoping to get Stephanie McCotlin, McCotlin back from the island agency.
So that's the same thing, though.
Anyone who is conversant and willing to talk.
Yeah, one is there.
There's a motion on the floor for, for.
Motion on the floor, you gotta vote on postponing the danger of the.
We just sort of, like, we did that.
Did you vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor? So now, would we, do we need a motion to have a public hearing for broadband on the 23rd as well?
I would move that we have a public hearing on broadband on the 23rd at five o'clock.
Second. All in favor? Okay, great. Ryan, how do we spell your, pronounce your last name?
Markarel. Markarel.
Markarel. Ryan Markarel is so impressed about Rogers, Rogers Island. I am, he is, I'm, we're all good. I am seeing you're not a senior, you're never around.
I've got some privileges.
Oh, come on. We don't, we don't have a seat, but you can sit covering your shirt.
Yes, you can.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Um, my name is.
You're not finished, John?
My name is Brian Markarel, I work for the Maine Island Trail Association, and today I wanna just give you a brief introduction to the Maine Island Trail and also talk with you about Rogers Island. Um, has anyone heard of the Maine Island Trail? The Maine Island Trail Association? Okay, to be honest, I mean, good. Uh, we are, we are different than, a, a lot of people get us confused with some other nonprofits that work in the same sphere, Maine Coast Heritage Trust, for instance. We're different from Maine Coast Heritage Trust, the Down East Coast Conservancy, we are different. Uh, the Butler Foundation, we are different. Copsco Trails, also different. Um, we, again, we work in the same sphere, but we do different things, although related.
Wouldn't you be more into power if you done it all together?
It's like.
Well, I mean, wouldn't it be more powerful if you got together?
Oh, like a, a validation?
Yes.
Like co-operate, they're slightly different missions, but there is some overlap, there's no doubt about that. There are probably some efficiencies to be resolved by that. So the Maine Island Trail, um, is a water trail for boats. It's like the Appalachian Trail is on land, this is for boats on the coast. It runs from Kinnery to Eastport, and it connects two hundred and twenty-six sites as of, as of this moment, the change, that number changes every year. Hundred and sixty-two are islands, sixty-four are mainland sites. And the idea is that you could put a boat in the water, on one end of the coast, and island hop the whole way out camping along the way. Uh, most people don't do it as a trail like that, most people just go out in Copsco Bay or Mississauga Bay or someplace in their boats and visit islands. Information about these places comes in the form of our guidebook, which the 2018 book arrived at our office yesterday and is being mailed out to folks. So I have a few copies of that here, if folks wanna, whoops. Uh, and also a companion mobile app that was developed a few years ago by a Maine-based app developer. All of the places on the trail are, they have a few things in common, they're all open for recreational use, whether it's day use, picnicking, or overnight camping. Some are big and have trails, some are just glorified ledges where you can get out of your boat and, and leave the world behind. Uh, and they're all accessible by, by boat, and, um, it's boat neutral, most, most of the users, more than fifty percent arrive by kayak, but our boaters, sailors, rowers, uh, stand-up paddleboarders all go out to these islands, and so do groups, um, camp groups, scout groups, school groups, and so forth. It was started thirty, thirty years ago this month by this guy, Dave Getchell Senior, who lives in the mid-coast and was working at the Island Institute at the time, and he had this vision of a water trail connecting islands from Portland to Jonesport. Uh, and he found thirty state-owned islands and put this thing together in nineteen eighty-eight. And since eighty-eight, it has grown little by little, uh, and just in the last ten years has made it up into the northeast corner of the state, into your, to your neck of the woods. Uh, in twenty, from twenty-ten to twenty-twelve, we were doing a bunch of community meetings up here. We had some at, um, Copsco Community Learning Center and elsewhere, talking about whether it made sense to list places in Copsco Bay on the Maine Island Trail and what places were appropriate and what weren't. Um, through those meetings, it was determined that there, there was a lot of interest in that. Uh, Michael was at those meetings and, and the prior town administrator, uh, was there as well. That's when Rogers Island kind of came to our attention. And just last year, we connected Copsco Bay to Machias Bay along the Volcoast with the help of the state Maine Coast Heritage Trust and the American Lighthouse Foundation. So there are now, in that book, for the first time, uh, there are dots on the map on the Volcoast. All of the places that are on the trail are owned by other individuals or entities. We, we're a nonprofit, we don't own a single acre, we don't have an easement on a single acre. They're all on the trail by way of handshake agreements with the landowners or the nonprofit, or the towns, um, or the state, or the federal agencies that, that own these places. The mission of our association, this was the mission as it was written thirty years ago and it hasn't changed, to establish a model with thoughtful use and volunteer stewardship for the main islands that will assure their conservation in a natural state while providing an exceptional recreational asset that is maintained and cared for by the people who use it. Uh, and that part in bold was really, I think, the innovative thing that Dave Getchell and others came up with was they, they looked at this network of places that people could go by boat and they thought to themselves, "How can we manage this? How can we ensure that people are treating these places respectfully?" Uh, and they realized that they didn't wanna hire a bunch of rangers, they didn't want wardens out there with badges, uh, patrolling. It really should be, um, up to the people who are using them to, uh, to take care of them. And so that was the ethic that they created, and that's still the, um, how it's grown today. We do have a staff, we're a staff of eight, this is our staff on a, on an island cleanup. We're based in Portland, I'm the only one not in this photo, I'm taking a picture. Um, and most of the people on our staff are involved with the business of running a nonprofit. We have a membership, we have a publication, we do fundraising, we send appeals, all that stuff. Maria and Chris are, are two stewardship people, and their job is to mobilize volunteers to go do the stewardship work that is needed on the islands, which comes in many forms, from cleaning up after storms to picking up marine debris, to trail work, cutting up lowdowns, maintaining camp sites, all the things that all of our other conservation partners do, we also do on the islands, in some cases for conservation partners, in some cases for private landowners, in some cases for towns. And one of the reasons that there was a lot of interest in having MIDA um, come into Copsco Bay was that we had this sort of core of volunteers that we could tap into and, and bring into Copsco Bay. Maria has been able to sort of mobilize a lot of folks here to go out and look at some of the islands in the bay here, um, including Michael, I don't know if anyone knows Michael Leonard, but he lives in Machias, he's, he's out here most frequently, this is one of our eighteen-foot ones gifts that he picks up and he launches in the bay and he closes around and checks on eight or ten islands and reports back on how things are doing. So this is what the Maine Island Trail looks like in Copsco Bay. Um, you can see there are some camping places, there are some day-use places, there are put-ins, um, there are tide stations. And what I wanted to do is just give you a quick snapshot of how people are using these islands. And, uh, we have pretty good data on three of the state-owned islands, Sumac Island, Cat Island, and a little unnamed island, uh, that's in Nortecove that we've taken a calling, Nortecove on. We get information about these places from a pretty low-tech logbook system, a registry, register system that we put out on the islands. It's just this, the state-owned Cat Island is a picture of the island and a father and daughter out on the island. Um, the state had us put up a sign with just some of the basic guidelines for use, and we attached the logbook to it, so we've got forty years of data from Cat Island. And it's a little hard to read up here on the wall, but, um, these numbers range from zero to ten people signing into the logbook. This is total, total signings for visitation over the course of twenty-fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and last year. Um, we capture some youth, uh, some data on how they're getting there or what they're doing there, day use versus camping. Day use in this instance is, oh, day use is green, camping is blue. And then how they're getting there. Um, blue is paddle, I think orange is motorboat, green is unknown, someone didn't fill that part out. So this is a report that we provide to the state every year, just coastwide, for all the islands that we manage for them, saying, "Here's how people are using your island," and then we sort of summarize what kind of stewardship activity we've done. And to give you a sense of how these places compare to the rest of the state-owned islands on the coast, way of the, um, way fewer visitors coming to the islands here in Copsco Bay than compared to Casko Bay or the Stonington region, which get hundreds of visitors a year. Uh, these Copsco Bay islands so far are only getting a handful. So you saw this slide before, this is cop, um, the sites, the trail sites in Copsco Bay, and what I wanted to talk about with you was Rogers Island, which is right here for those who aren't familiar with Rogers. It is town-owned and, uh, open for low-impact recreational use according to the comprehensive plan. And Rogers came to our attention in those early stakeholder conversations, and, um, I think your predecessor looked, started to look into it, and, and then you picked it up when you came along. Um, and one of the things that we noticed, you know, we're, we have an eye for sort of recreational value of places, um, and Rogers has a few things going for it from the recreational use standpoint. One is, it's pretty close to shore, so it's an easy day trip for folks. About less than a nautical mile from the town, the town landing here. Uh, which is great for people who maybe, maybe if they're setting off and intending to go further up the bay and they misjudge the tides, or fog bank rolls in and they need to kind of weed it out for a little bit, it's nice to know that they can go ashore on a place like this.
There's also access from the North Lebeck Field, yeah, close end. That's, that's town-owned, they purchased it to access Rogers Island.
The town purchasing it?
Yep.
Yeah.
So Maine Coast Heritage Trust.
They did? With the money that came with the island.
Oh.
That was purpose of having land access.
What's the name of that? Dickerson, June Ives Dickerson.
No, ask them. Where was the building?
It's across from Almeida and Marshall Russ's house, there's a parking lot there, and that was put in.
Oh, okay. It's called the cell there.
Okay. It might be safer passage to the island through there, I don't know if this.
I mean, it's only like, can you put a car on you in there?
Right.
Eight of a mile.
That's something that we could look at.
Well, it's an ideal for students.
Yep.
Access that.
The other thing Rogers has going for it recreationally is it's very easy to land on, which is not the case for all the islands. Uh, it's got these nice gravel beaches, um, I've only been on the shore once, and that's, that's me kind of scoping things out, like you can land here, you can land here. I did not get to this little island, um, but it does look like there are some decent landings from there as well. So it has recreational value. In the comp plan, this is from the, the document that's on your website, um, Rogers is listed as having no formal facilities, but that access is allowed by small watercraft only for low-impact day-use recreation, which is, which is consistent with a lot of places on the Maine Island Trail. It also notes that the primary function is as a bird sanctuary. And I don't, I don't have any information, I'm not aware of what the habitat is like, what kind of birds are using it.
Well, we have a couple in town who are active birders and are showing great interest in it, they're here in the summer, so they would love to explore that.
Let's see what the court knows.
It's a messenger.
All right, it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
I also noticed in your comp plan, and I, I fought you for this, um, seems like Lebeck's really embracing the regional recreation, recreational resources that you have here. Um, this is a list of sort of some of the regional resources that the town benefits from, either economically or through tourism and stuff. Um, this was done before the Maine Island Trail was in Copsco Bay, but I hope when you update your plan, maybe the Maine Island Trail will make it on your list because, uh, we are, uh, a lot of people don't know this, but Downey's Magazine named us the best trail in Maine. Beating, beating out all of our favorite hiking and cycling and snowmobile trails.
Well, we also are, have known to have the best beaches in Lebeck.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. I'd say. Oh, according to Downey's.
Just cause.
Yeah. Outside Magazine has called the Maine Island Trail the best sea kayaking trail in America, and there's more than one, so that's actually, that's worth something. Um, and Downey's there, and, uh, National Geographic Adventures said paddling the Maine Island Trail is one of the fifty best American adventures, which is right there, right up there with rafting the Grand Canyon and hiking the Pacific Crest Trail and so on and so forth. In twenty-eleven, some Harvard University graduate students did an economic impact assessment of the Maine Island Trail, and what they found was that, um, it contributes one and three-quarter million annually to the main economy, and that's just from outside spending. When you add in money that stays in state from people choosing to stay here and use the trail versus take, you know, the roads where, that number ballooned to over three million. Uh, and at the time, they measured forty-two thousand directly here in, in Washington County. That was before the islands in Copsco Bay and Volcoast were part of the trail, so I, I would, I think it's safe to say that the number is probably, at least that much today, probably the more. So, um, just wrapping up, you know, from, from MIDA's perspective, we'd love to have a conversation with you about whether it's appropriate to have Rogers Island as part of the Maine Island Trail. It definitely has a recreational value, um, and it seems to check some of the boxes that you've set for yourself in your comp plan. It's, uh, particularly the three I've highlighted here, continue to participate in regional recreational initiatives and programs. Check. Work with a local land trust or other preservation organization to expand public access to open space and recreational land already in conservation, that, that this would achieve that. And work with public and private partners to extend and maintain the network of trails for motorized and non-motorized uses. Connect with regional trail systems where possible. I'm guessing that was written with hiking trail systems in mind, but it works for water trails too. Um, so, uh, it, it seems like a good fit from our perspective, but what I wanted to do today was ask, you know, you to consider and, or start a dialogue with you about whether Rogers makes sense for the Maine Island Trail and what other things you'd like to consider and, and talk about. Um, just summarizing the benefits of the relationship with MIDA, uh, it does enhance the existing recreational experience. You would benefit from MIDA's volunteer stewardship, so we would be sending, we would try to find island adopters, we call them, who would go out in their own boats and check on the islands, and then folks like me would take our skip around, would stop in throughout the summer and kind of keep an eye on things. Um, our philosophy is low impact, leave no trace, responsible voting, so we're not, we're not advertising this to the world and inviting a bunch of yahoos to go out and make a mess of the place. This is really tailored to people who less care about these islands. Um, and the agreement is non-binding, it's based on a handshake, so the town can opt in and opt out at any time, um, and there's, there's no cost.
Would you put one of those logs, one of those signs?
Yeah, the town, if you want, yeah. It's a great source of data, um, for the few that, for the few that go and sign in, but we may find an island as close as Rogers to shore gets a little bit more use than some other.
It does look like it's safe to land over there too, which is nice.
I, I think it's a wonderful island. I don't see us, how can I put this? I don't want to get very easy for people to go out there and spend the night or, uh, because it's accessible, to find an excuse to just go down there.
Well, we don't have to designate for camping, correct?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and I think it's.
I mean, either camping or not camping, it's gonna be up to the town.
Yeah.
Right. We want to make the guidelines very clear. And that's, that's really something that, you know, we see ourselves through the guidebook and through signage, if you wanted to sign out there, um, as, as a vehicle for kind of communicating guidelines to people. Camping versus no camping, fires versus no fires, pets are okay versus no pets. Those are the things that we'd want to make sure were very clear.
Yeah, it's easy, I guess, it's easy accessibility as a double-edged sword. That's.
Don't disturb the. I'm already calling people, but I.
I think, uh, if I remember correctly, how the island was gifted to the town, there was language that, the part about the birds was so that you could go there and observe birds. So I think if that's still a desired goal, then it's gonna be no pets. Because if you bring a dog onto the island, then it's nesting time and.
Yeah, that's true.
And my other question was gonna be, when people go there, there's obvious places where they're gonna land. Do you put a small sign to guide them to an information room thing, so they know how to enjoy it and, and when you set the, the limits to there's no camping or camping.
Yeah, if, if that was something the town wanted, you could certainly do that.
Is it completely under the town's control, or are we still following what the original intent was by the?
Oh, it was done, wasn't it? It's completely under the town's control, but.
It was language, it was gift, it was given, not an intention.
Recreation and first.
I think at first it was given, but I have a Dickerson, Dickerson family in control of the library, I believe. No. I, I believe the library does have something to do with it.
They, they.
I.
We'll have to check.
I, I went to court and received, I don't know if they took, but basically what happened, they, they, they took.
The Dickerson fund was.
Right, but they left a portion for, they didn't include the island, they took some of the money that came with it. There was like a hundred and eighty thousand, I think, from my research, and.
I know it was involved with the library.
They figured out that it could have been, her, her wishes would have been for the arts and that, and so they took it to court and threw the, like. And so they took it to court and through the litigation in hand, they received a large sum of money that had been given to the town. And it went to the library. But what's left is, is completely separate from the library. It's town. It's in a CD.
They've already got their seven.
Right.
I just did one.
To get, you know. That's, that's in that town.
Rest in peace, the woman, or, or, or somebody. We're all movies, actually. We have to run it by her.
So how would we proceed if this letter of votes should go forward with adding Rogers Island to the Maine Island Trail? Would we have some guidelines that we could kind of check off? Yes, we want this. No, we don't want this. Yes, we want this. Some kind of application. Kind of thing that we could vote, that we want to go forward with working with you.
More specific.
And then get a little more specific, yes.
Yeah. In, in a lot of cases when we've worked with towns, we've gone through the town manager or administrator or committee member. And kind of worked a lot of that stuff out in draft form. And then the drafts go through the.
Is it your late put on this year? Such a book is there?
Yes.
And you put it on the app?
You could put it in the app, or we could wait until the next book they're published. It's no. It's entirely up to you.
Well, I did the DRI of so many, some islands that were already on the trail. I think it was in Formation. And it was just fantastic. That's an island called Proider. And I came there for a week and it was perfect. Didn't see anybody. Schoolers would say why, and they'd stop and take pictures. But I, I think it was just an excellent idea to know the island, so you could go to so many islands in the day, apply for it all. Know that you could go out there and, you know, stay for a few hours or stay a week. Bunch of fishermen and the families would love to want and have the Labor Day plan made. Or is that still very conscious to put the fire below the tide? Which was, yeah, they were very conscious of that. I also thought that breathing is a good way to keep kids busy. But it's a great idea. And I've seen it work. And also must Congress pay, so. One of the islands there, so I, I think that we will benefit from this community and would, really deserve some of these islands.
That's my, that's my spiel.
I still, how do you get one of those books?
Yes, so we're a membership nonprofit. So you've got a member and you get the book in the mail.
Oh, right.
The app is free.
You just go online anywhere?
Yep, go online to do it. The app is free to download. And it, and it comes preloaded with all of the state owned islands. And then when you become a member, you get a passcode that unlocks all the privately owned stuff and the stuff behind the veil. So you could, yeah, you can get a flavor for it on a smartphone and tablet.
So you're not advertising out to the general public that these islands are available? Like if, if the town did decide that camping was allowed there, it would be that it would be known to everybody. It would be known to the people that are part of the ownership.
Only because I'm like him, I'm one of those low income campers sometimes, so it's nice to have places they can go. Spend the nights.
Well, the app has.
So if he doesn't have a job, he wouldn't have like the town island unless he joined.
Unless the town wanted it.
That's just a switch. Some restriction.
I sort of, I, I'd like to be camping in the. I can't, I couldn't.
He's probably saying was that you could, you could actually put the location of Rogers Island behind their paywall.
Right, yes.
So only.
That makes sense.
Only paying customers would know it's there.
That makes sense.
And I also caution that we would, if anybody needs going to launch from the road, any that they come up and agree and check the tide charts, they check the, they check the weather.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a good thing.
I'm often riding the down kayak, they're saying, you know, don't go that way. Don't turn right through the narrows. It's dangerous.
Safety, I didn't mention, but, you know, safety is a big part of the information we try to put out. Yep.
Okay, you're nailed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very much, very great.
That was a good, good to know. What do you, are the ones that, I'll call your favorite site.
Okay, here, I'll look for what you want. So we have three foreclosures, two parcels of land and one with a house and I think five, approximately five acres. The question is, do we want to make a motion to put these foreclosures out to bid?
Or what's, or what's the alternative?
Not to put it out to bid.
Oh, excuse me, that's amazing grasp from the office.
Um, I'm sorry. She, she knows me. I usually have something else we can do, but no. Um, simple. So it would be in the definition, map and lot, map zero zero four dash zero twenty-seven dash zero zero B. The next one would be map and lot zero zero nine, zero zero four, zero zero one. And map and lot zero zero nine, zero zero two, and zero zero three. So one is zero penny road, the other is zero penny road. So it doesn't have an address, it's a house on a, there's one thirty-eight Dixie Road.
And remember, these people have an opportunity to bid on it themselves, correct?
Everybody, every, anybody does. So it's just, the motion is shall we put it out to bid the properties that are foreclosed?
How would move we put it out to bid?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now, now that we've agreed to that, we have to come up with prices, minimum bids. So now that we've agreed to put it out to bid, what do we put it out to bid for? We usually put it out for the, the minimum of what the taxes are owed on the property. Do you want to just make the motion that we put it out to bid at the minimum of what the taxes are? Surrounded with interest and so on, as the date of the act. And the date of the publication.
The date of what? The amount of what's owed on each one?
Yeah, the amount of what's owed. And as of today. No, you could actually do the projected amount that is owed at the time of the date it's being opened.
Right.
That would be the smart thing to do. And we can put more money. So we've done really well and I want to commend Renee and Suzette for their un, just unbelievable ability to gotten all of these properties taken care of and, and well funded if necessary and to put out to bid. Access of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe we were up to four, the road improvement fund, which we voted for last year. So that's just, I'm sure, the public versus the jury. And hopefully we will not be tripping in potholes, you know?
I know Ricky has already come up with one of the paying contractors going over the projects.
Great. So if you have a favorite hole or something somewhere near one of our roads, just come in and write it on a list because we might be able to get to it. Uh-oh, we have a pothole.
Two tow roads, all placed fine.
I think we should have put it out to bid.
Who wants to buy it at all? Put it on it all. Okay, so we need a motion that we won't put the properties out to bid at the taxes owed. Uh, for the date of.
Did you amend that motion?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, pretty good.
Well, amend, amend that.
Can you amend it, Rachel?
I amended to.
To include the projected amount, what you've been doing.
Yes, just what you said.
Yep, that's seconded by Tony.
Yeah.
Dog waste retainers?
Oh, Rhonda, you're on.
We have five boxes. We have about a hundred and sixteen bags to start with. And I've got three absolute locations and two that I may move a little bit to see how they were bid. Maui Beach is having one and one behind the school where you go down the boardwalk.
Great.
There will be one out at the bar on the South Rebecca Road again, where your clay pots are there. And there'll be one down by the flatiron, but not where it was last year. It didn't get used. So I want to move it a little bit so people walking back and forth, because there's something.
Maybe the park across from the post office.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I did think about that last year. I did have, I'm going to have one down at Stockford Park too, keep that area clean.
And wasn't there one down here, the Fisherman's Memorial?
That one is one that Cohells do.
Oh, okay.
And I haven't talked to Ellen yet, but I probably will and hopefully that one will be up again too. And then one afterward, you or Carol, as you walk up between there and where the fishermen's wharves. I want to get there somewhere because there's a lot of.
Yes, for us seems to get.
By the dog.
But I just, I just received an email from Heidi Lake today. I haven't had the chance to review the article, but I guess there's a very big thing going on with dog waste and clam flats. pollution and it's just come out from the state, so I don't have the chance to review it. I would email that to you because maybe you may need to up the ante on, you know, the clam flats.
And I always had, it was Julie Keane who first drawn into our attention. And this was months and months and months ago. I, I was unaware of that. And since then, it seems like everybody is picking up on.
May I suggest that we use Quadi TV to educate the public that there is an ordinance regarding picking up of dog waste? And at the same time, you could also mention issues with dogs on the clam flats. And I would normally say, don't put a collection point out there, but people who don't know will show up. Their dog will run and then if they see the thing and they notice, they realize, oh, I better use the bags. Okay? Because it's a serious issue with our clambers.
Yeah, there's, there's a few ideas I run by that are short and sweet that kind of.
Yeah. These boxes are maintained and were built by volunteers, right? And I just ordered the bags from Rhonda and they are made from plants.
Like by, by.
Yeah, we'll break down.
So we're not, we're not pretty morose today. We also have a rabies clinic on May nineteenth here as fire station between nine and eleven as well as one.
Um, I, we want to, I think, put a second wave of information out there by June because that's when a lot of the tourists come. And I think it would be a double planning to make sure that everybody knows. We know that, but you know, summer key starts and.
Rhonda, can you come to the June fourth of Shellfish Committee meeting at six? We have Heidi Lake coming and she will be discussing this whole issue. And since it sort of ties into it, we'd really love to have you. June fourth at six.
Go on then. I'll double check in the office. Sign town clerk for the motion.
I am going through my certification for town clerk. And I need to prove that I've been deputy clerk and clerk for the last eleven years. To do that, I could have you guys sign this one rather than going through eleven years worth of appointment papers.
Yes, build it.
We found out today that, we knew that there is a discount that our insurance offers when the tax collector treasurer gets certified. Also when the town clerk gets certified. So I'm almost there. As far as I know, this will make it so I can take the test. We have to have all of those. I've got them all.
So we'll make a motion?
I think I'll make a motion.
And I, in your, in your packets, I included for the first appointment paper that I found for myself. And then the appointment paper, so all points in between.
Uh, do I have a second? All in favor? Help the cards to test?
It's open book, so I'm.
You have a book.
And there's a whole list of actually the state of Maine certified town clerks, so it could be harder than I'm anticipating.
I'll update on this on TV for playing status. Got the wastewater treatment plant floodplain stats? Did I just say that, are you just going to build them higher?
No.
I'm reading.
Yeah, that's. It's wonderful. Well, it's three pages, so we want to, so basically, the last, the last paragraph. We, when we looked at your treatment plant, I'm on the next to the last page. And the second paragraph, when we looked at your treatment.
Your head.
When we looked at your treatment plant, we were aware that there is a mapped floodplain shown surrounding and including the plant site. But it appears that the elevation of key structures were originally selected to be above this elevation. There are, there are basement and foundation elevations below the seventeen point zero zero flood elevation. But it appears that measures were taken when the plant was constructed to place the tops of structures several feet higher than the flood evaluation. Elevation, sorry. So in a nutshell, it's, it may, they planned to rebuild it and it's fine.
That's very good. Once again, this company, these two are excellent, excellent.
On our agenda is the marijuana committee update. I'm referring John on this. Uh, he's been doing quite a bit of research and has given ice, I gave to you the summary. Thank you, because I printed the whole thing out, not no one believes seventy-five pages at a time. And then I thought, oh, you have a summary. And I said, well, see, I felt like I was going to read, am I going to read the book or footnotes? And I, I chose footnotes for now. Did they pass something today?
They did, they did something today on the, the over, the over road government. Right, so that law, right. And the law is an important substance, the, the one that I sent out, it's called the committee amendment.
Yes.
So I'm happy that the memo that I wrote is, is correct. So, so in any event, that's really where we are. And now the town has to make some decisions on what we want to do or what, what we don't want to do with respect to marijuana establishments. Social clubs are not on the table anymore. So, you know, we have cultivation, we have manufacturing, we have testing, and we have retail. So those are, those are the four categories that are not by law. The, there's a lot of details that are yet to be flushed out. It will be flushed out in the regulations. I'm not sure when they're going to be forthcoming, but we probably don't have to wait for that. They really apply to the details of, you know, labeling and, you know, for the folks who are actually going to be CD tournaments. I don't think they're really going to impact the town. What, what we need to be concerned about are basically zoning and licensing.
And I, I received your email this morning about save the date for fields agreed this May, about twenty-four. It's supposed to be, and it's going to be in Portland.
Yeah.
And you are willing to go?
Yeah, I'm willing to go. Um, the cost is three hundred dollars. By, you know, it's basically a pay to play. The law firm that put this together is the law firm that created the PowerPoint presentation for the Maine Municipal Association back in twenty seventeen. They, I talked to that attorney today. He's updating that presentation and they're going to have a lot of information for, I can pass this around. There's going to be a lot of information about what towns need to do. I think it's pretty important that we send some of them.
Yes.
So in any event, I'm, I'm happy to go.
Yeah, I believe so. So we need a motion to send John to this meeting along with paying for the, the cost in his transportation.
I would move that we send John to this meeting and we remove the costs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah. This is a one day conference?
Second, John.
Yeah, it's, it's in Portland, so, you know, it's, it's five hour drive.
Yes, so we, we are.
And it's an all day thing, so.
Yeah, so that's a yes. So we, we need to, we will respond to this as a town, as, as, as the town of Quebec coming with you as our representative. So that's a yes, so we, we need to, we will, um, respond to this as a town, as, as, as the town will be backcoming with you as our representative. Is that good?
Yes.
I want to see that help us with that. She can break, register me, unless you need to register and get me first, what?
Yeah, I'll do that.
You wanna do it that way?
Yeah, I'll have to do it. Um, the, um, one of the things we also talked about is, um, when we should have a public meeting. Um, and it may be, maybe more prudent to have it after this.
We, we talked about the thirty instead of the twenty-third, is that good for you? That's, that looking before our slum board meeting. Renee, we'll be, we mean, we're gonna go with that. Renee's gonna be in jury duty, but as long as we have someone taking notes of the public hearing, we'll be able to do that. And then you'll come back with the choices, because the reason why the time is of the essence now, we did create a marijuana committee at our committee over a year and a half ago, and it's coming to August where we have to vote on an ordinance. So we need to do fast track for an order, a proposed ordinance. So this public hearing will be, um, will literally be a working public hearing where we will be constructing an ordinance so that we, that everyone will be in agreement on at this public hearing, and I believe we can do it that way. Otherwise, if it's changed significantly after the public hearing, Renee says we would have to go to, talk to MMA, that we would have to go back to another public hearing, but if we made it a working public hearing, we should be able to. And you're gonna bring other or- ordinances from other towns that we can leave out?
Zip drive here that has all of my research on it.
Oh.
Um, there's only one.
That's her, because she listens to a lot, I, I might vote it.
There's a lot of information on Apple Palm, whoever wants it.
Here, Renee can.
But there, there is only one town has taken this to Detroit to pass an ordinance, and that's the town of South Portland.
Okay.
Um, this lawyer who is putting on this presentation, um, actually lives in South Portland. Um, the Tex, um, Howser is the planning director of South Portland. Um, they've been working on this for a year and a half.
Well, we got a lot of people.
So they got it together. Um, what they do have that Quebec does not have, um, are zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
Um, but they're gonna be discussing that, there's a lot of towns that are in the same position we are. Um, we believe that under the home rule, um, regulations and law, there's, there's enough there for, for us to regulate it. Uh, and certainly the statute gives, gives municipalities the power not only to opt in or opt out, um, but to create, um, um, regulations. There was language in the old statute that said you couldn't make them any more restricted than the states. That language is gone now. So, um, there, it gave the municipalities a lot of flexibility in what to do, so.
So I thought the municipality could be more restrictive, not less restrictive than the state. I thought that was.
It can, but that language is completely out.
So we can now, it can.
It can be more restrictive.
Everything?
Yeah, it can be more restrictive.
Not just marijuana issue?
The, the, no, this is, this is the marijuana.
Just the, just the marijuana, yeah.
I mean, that language is removed. Yeah. So, it didn't, I mean, it doesn't say you can be more restrictive, it just doesn't say.
Just on that issue.
Well, just on that issue, that's my thinking, I'm going, what?
Yeah, I saw that.
Thank you, uh, thank you for going all the way to Portland.
The importance of change, of the game changer of a working public hearing should really be stressed in the advertisement of this public hearing.
Do you like that?
Because it's gonna wind up being those who show up are going to steer. Well, and it's a twenty-five per.
It's better than three people.
I understand that, and we've seen it before.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Uh, we need a motion on that, do, would you, do you like that idea? Yes, I, I moved though. We, uh, set up a working public. Yeah, so that everyone.
We say why it's a working public hearing, because you need at the end of that meeting to have.
An ordinance.
Some guidance, some direction.
Otherwise, we'll have to do it all over. Yes. Only second, when, when is it? Second, May thirtieth.
Second, May thirtieth.
Five? Well, we better make it four.
Make it earlier.
We better make it four, because more than two hours of waiting. It's four today?
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll comment, um, so nobody panics. Um, if we do nothing, it'll be okay.
Okay, great.
Right? Because, because unless the town passes an ordinance allowing it. You can't, you can't get, you can't get an application in. I mean, basically, you have to go through the state approval first, once you get the state approval, you get this temporary license. Um, and then you, then you go to the town, which you can only go, the town can only accept the application, and the applicant can only put an application, and the town has passed an ordinance saying.
So it's like a limited license, but it's the other way around. You have to come to the municipality before you send your application to the state. This issue applied for the state, and then you come to the municipality.
The state's, state's gonna do the, you know, the, the criminal checks, they're gonna do the residency requirements, all that stuff's gonna be done before it even gets to the municipality. And all the municipality has to worry about is, it's on board.
Yes, it's a fair. Yes, it's left right after that. Thank you, that's, that's reassuring. If nothing else in the public hearing is the, um, informational for the people wanting to work there, and then if it becomes an article on the town meeting, then it will be voted day or day by the, by the, uh, full governing body. That it tends, and I hope it's a lot of people. So, anything else?
For your records, we'll quote, quote on the, uh.
We'll give you a little bit of gravel. So, other than this?
Yes, I have. Oh, one. The nomination papers are available.
Oh, right.
For the positions, um.
Two.
Two selectmen. Two selectmen. A water video term, yeah, the water board.
Or, uh.
One, the school board.
School board.
School board, there, there was an error on the ad that went out in the Quadi Tides. The wrong version said that there's three positions for school board, three, two, and one. It's only two positions, and they're both three-year terms, and so we are correcting our advertising.
All of them are three.
They are, they're both. There's only two school board positions, go for it, and then three-year terms.
You got this.
Yes.
Yes.
You can come back again. You can take that paper.
There's two selectmen.
Two selectmen, three years.
And when's the date the paper?
June eighth, by four o'clock. Oh, the conservation, you want to mention that now or during the Shellfish Committee update? The conservation hours are May nineteenth at the Seaboo, at seven thirty in the morning.
Yes, we tend to do that. I think that may have put the flyers around, and you did get the shooting.
Clambers.
Oh, yeah, and a shellfish, uh, licenses are going on sale till, actually, it will be July second, because July versus the Sunday. And there is always a lottery for the non-residents. I don't know how many are available this year yet, we have to figure out how many are grandfathered in. And that is first, that is, you have to be here at eight, and if every year, however many spots we pull, ten percent of the sale of the, uh, residents, so not less than ten non-residents, but there are six or seven grandfathered non-residents now buying, buying licenses, but they do have to purchase them before the tickets go off, tickets, the licenses go on sale, so that we know how many spots, some of them will not buy, and then there'll be more spots for newcomers.
One more thing on the nomination papers, the budget committee is also.
Yes.
Three, three positions, one year, two year, and three years, after we staggered, and we never have anybody run, so.
No. I wonder if nobody buys the budget. That is the funnest committee to be honest. We needed to eat other pizza, that really meant the problem. Okay, uh, public comment, anyone? Committee updates, Tony?
Uh, our meeting will be May twenty-first, six o'clock, Monday, third Monday of the month. And our last meeting, we had presentation by Maine Heritage Trust, who will perform some land upgrades on Wallace Cove Road, which is off of Booth Cove, provide a parking area and some land clearance for the boaters, and boaters both, uh, fresh boaters or fishermen and recreational users will have a, a location where they can launch their boats from, and, uh, safe area in the park. Have you sent him one?
Well, if I may comment, I attended that meeting, and I was surprised that the representative from Maine Coast Area Trust was directed to go to the harbor board when this board had, their last visit by that same representative, had decided that you would hear from them first, you would, but they went directly to the harbor board. And case in point is, uh, again, I raised the issue of facilities. You're inviting people to go out and really, and where do they go to the bathroom? I hate to be crude about this, but this has been a reach of epic proportion where we've got trails and trailheads and all this stuff, and no place. Okay, so now I have a solution. We're in the midst of looking at four and a half million dollars to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant. You know, there's no reason why a septic pumpkin truck couldn't back up to that wastewater treatment plant and empty in the pit. So therefore, the sweetener to the deal is, is if these conservation groups would put in facilities. When they're pumped, they can be dumped here at no cost.
Only might be, do have to have a permit from the state to do that, even for a private septic company.
I think that had happened, Tony. I believe that.
And it has, it's also based on the size of the plant, because I looked into that several years ago as another means of having income for like our septic company that come into town, pump tanks out.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, I'm not suggesting this as a revenue stream, I'm suggesting this as a working together to achieve, if we are gonna make this pivot to a tourist-based economy, let's treat them like human beings. And the plant. And the plant has sufficient. Yeah, the plant has capacity, there's no question about that. Food for the.
John?
Can't you just use composting? I would kind of leave the whole, every national park that's small, they have.
Say it again?
Compost.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's cheaper to install.
What, what comes out of every Quadi? I just.
That's pumped.
That's, okay.
That's looking waste.
But along with. But these trailheads, they're, they're saying don't have that many people using them. Yeah.
We have maintenance issue on still, I mean, it's not like they can just sit there and somebody has something, we check them.
Point on candidates of this next, of composting.
Composting toilets, yeah. Because we're probably actually, I, I don't know if they would be able to do every trail, because there are just a ton of trails.
Start somewhere.
Yeah, and, and.
Who's the most populated?
The ones that are visited the most.
Yes, I agree.
They go with some dogs.
Don't you suggest. So glad you put it that way, Dan. Okay, where were we? Uh, Joanne.
Monday is June. Monday is June four o'clock.
June twenty-fifth.
Well, yeah, many bets, uh, four o'clock.
Um, Rachel? Yes, three second meeting will be coming up this coming Friday, and I just want to, uh, bring this up, Renee, so I suspect, uh, four o'clock. You are the one who put this in my mailbox.
And I returned it to you.
Yeah, I, I just want it to be known that I am not buying a boxcar from Marshall Russ. I just, I want to make this public right now. I will not, that is not for me, that is for the town. Enough said. And, and Michael did have some, you know, enterprising and innovative ideas as to what we could do with it that involves Stockford Park, which I'm open to, you know, listening to, but let it be, I do not want this thing in my backyard. Okay, and the economic development is kind of up for grabs right now, because we have Stephanie coming on the twenty-first, and, and that may be the place that the Economic Development Committee, you know, I don't want to double up.
We know the time on that.
Is she will be here at three o'clock.
Oh, when's that?
And I have. And that.
Economic Development's when?
It's gonna be the twenty-first here at three o'clock. And who is, uh? Stephanie McLaughlin is from the Island Institute, and she is gonna be prepping us for the broadband fiber optics and bring us all.
You're writing it, working on grant?
Grant, did you say? Uh, not yet, no, we're not at that point yet, but we will be. Yes, John.
My thought is that Economic Development Committee and the Marijuana Committee ought to be communicated, because the marijuana legislation is an economic development opportunity.
Yes.
That's really what it is, otherwise, otherwise, why bother?
Yeah, no, and I think that's fine. However, I tell you, when we started the City Economic Development Committee, we would meet, and we would talk, insert all the things that everybody wanted to do in this town, that would bring tons and tons and tons of money, and wouldn't this be nice, wouldn't this be nice? Finally, I said, look, we have to focus on one thing, one thing only for the time being, and it's gonna be fiber optic broadband, because I think that will be the game changer for this town. And I, first of all, it's taken a lot for me to understand what the devil that is, because to me, it's all out there in the ether. Um, but it is consistent, high, uh, intensity of internet, so it's, and, and the only way I can explain it, and I'll probably say this a thousand times before we're finished, is that right now, this time, we have broadband. But as everybody knows, if they have a computer, sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, sometimes you lose, sometimes you get it. This will eliminate all of that, this, it'll be high speed all the time, so that people will be able to work out of their home. You would be able to.
Well, that's interesting you should say that, um, uh, it would be nice to have it in the more rural areas.
Absolutely, and there is a bit push to have it in the rural areas.
I try to hang up the phone between five and seven so that you have a little more.
Yeah, this is telling somebody that we, we're out here in the wood-fired, uh, computer.
Everyone won't even come down the road.
Yeah, so.
Well, the fun part is, time lawyer will say yes if you call.
Yes.
And then you say, no, don't say yes.
Yeah.
Would you please, and then they go, oh, yeah, no, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so we want to eliminate that, it needs to be for everybody all over this town. And I was encouraged by Island Institute, which was, and just that day when I was at that conference, had just received word that Cranberry Islands had received one point three or one point five million dollar grant from this. And I thought, whoa, and I was so excited about that, and I, some people have heard this from me. And, and sort of at the end of the conference, I said, so how many people are gonna get this service of Cranberry Islands? And they said about a hundred and forty. And so, oh my God, I, I think Quebec is small, when I always think we're out here at the boonies. But this is a one point three million dollar grant for a hundred and forty-some odd people. So, now granted, they're all over the islands, and there's a whole lot of, uh, stuff that has to go on for them to get it, but it kept going through my mind, like, oh my God, we've got, you know, maybe a thousand people average, um, we've gotta work that first. Well, you're doing a very good job. Thank you so much, and I think I'm beginning to sound a little more intelligent about this. Dan?
In, in cahoots with economic development and the marijuana, we have the, uh, revolving loan, which is an economic opportunity, uh, for all those who would like to start a business here in Quebec. Um, it is a, a great opportunity, and I, as I do at every meeting, I urge anyone to go on the town website or call the town regarding the opportunities and the guidelines for getting some funds to start a business.
Yeah, and the CDBG grants that were recently awarded, just about every person that came would have, would benefit by, um, fiber optics.
So again, please remember the revolving loan is a great opportunity if you'd like to start a business, and our next meeting, I believe, is gonna be June twelfth, I want to say.
That's Saturday.
No.
No, June twelfth is Tuesday.
June twelfth at, at three o'clock.
Uh, Shellfish is May seventh at six o'clock, and as Renee pointed out, there's a conservation on May nineteenth at seven thirty at, behind the Seaboo, at seven thirty AM, yes. And Safe Harbor is on the twenty-fourth of May at five o'clock, and everyone is welcome. Mike?
I am pleased to announce that we've begun the construction and installation of the groundwork for the compactor unit at Marion Transfer Station. The equipment is shipped and in, coming here, but we don't know exactly where it is, but it'll get here soon. And, uh, and there'll, there'll be some big changes. Nothing has changed as far as our, our ability to service the communities, uh, because we left two of the cans operating normally, and it will only affect two of the cans with the compactor, but stay tuned, and I'll keep you updated on more developments. And could you please enter your names, and I will, I tell them myself, and commend that transfer station as, well, I can bet it really cleaned up and. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you. And, and obviously, they've put a lot of effort into maintaining it, and it shows. I will transfer that to, to those who should hear it, Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Joanne.
Anybody, anyone else? Any other comments?
I make the most of yours.
Second. All in favor? Thank you for coming.
Renee?
Hello.
Yes.